All right, we're missing a few key people, but thank you, Joanne, for sitting in for David. Thank you, Patrick, for being here. And Martin, I think, is yonder, somewhere in the Nordic area, traveling. So I will start with any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. All right, seeing none, I will move on to any amendments to the agenda. All right, seeing none, we will move on to announcements. Do we have announcements? I think we have, convocation is on...
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
Right.
And all the board is invited to that. I think it starts at about 8:30?
I think it does. Thank you, Stuart.
Oh, thanks. I'll look out.
Friday, next Friday.
Yes, Friday, yeah. Yeah. And the board is certainly welcome to attend. And I'm trying to think if there are any other announcements.
Sorry, what time is that?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
So there's coffee date, I think, and then you're curious when they...
Yeah, and the opening session, the board typically stays for the opening session that runs about an hour and a half. All right. Seeing any other announcements by board or public?
I just have a question about convocation. Is this school board doing a school board award that you...
As a matter of fact, that's a good segue. I have the criteria for the Ted Manazza Award. I do not have the specific recommendations here, but I'll pass these out to board members, who may or may not have participated before, and just highlight those. Typically, we make a selection based on administrative recommendation in executive session, and an award is presented at convocation. But if I could just take a minute and go through the criteria here. The criteria for the Ted Manazza Award, and for those of you who are not aware, Ted Manazza was a longstanding school board member with about, by recollection, is 28 years on the board. I'm looking for some nod on that, but an extensive period of time. And this award was developed to recognize employees for distinction in innovation, creativity, initiative leadership, resourcefulness, and who exceed expectation in moving the district forward in achievements of its end policy. And there is a rubric here on, that administration used in recommending either individuals or teams for this award that include disposition for lifelong learning, academic proficiency, personal development, and citizenship. And there, my understanding is there are a couple of recommendations that will come to the board, and we'll have an opportunity to make a selection in executive session and then announce that at convocation. Thanks, Diane, for reminding me. Any other announcements? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item six, city and school collaboration. We have warned this item for action, and this is on regional governance resolution from the South Burlington City Council. I have an updated copy of the resolution that was approved by council, actually negotiated, I think, after...
There are a couple extras.
I think there's some extras. The, I sat in on the city council meeting a week ago, Monday, where this was initially discussed and warned for action, and the council decided to call another meeting last Thursday, and after about three hours of work, I think, came up with a revised resolution. And I think the boards has had this and had a chance to look at it. It's fairly skinnied down from the original resolution that we had looked at at our last meeting. And I don't want to, Tom, put you on the spot, but would you like to give a quick summary on the revised resolution? You can maybe use one of the mics there. Do you need a copy?
I do not. Tom Chittenden, South Burlington resident, thank you. So, yes, I'm very happy with this. The resolution did pass four to one. There was some concerns about some of the whereas clauses that were in the version that you all saw previously, but we definitely coalesced around this version, and we also softened the language a bit. All it's asking for is to just have the conversation about, and to take action on the recommendation that was made to the Burlington City Council in 2013 to explore an alternative governance model that would give us all a voice in decisions that affect our municipalities from the air operations.
And if I can paraphrase some of the discussion that occurred at the Monday city council meeting, the gist of it, and I'm sure I'm simplifying it a little bit too much, but was that the original resolution looked at the formation of a regional council that would, that would put South Burlington on a level playing field with Burlington and other communities that were named, like Winuski and Shelburne and Essex and whoever else. And I know there was some concern expressed that, by some of the council members, that there might, that South Burlington, because the airport resides in South Burlington, might have more of a enhanced role versus just another seat at the table in either the form of ownership, co-ownership of the airport, or in a stronger governance role along with neighboring communities that are impacted by the, by the airport. Is that a fairly...
True, yes.
There was a lot of other discussion, but that was one of the key points, I think, that drove a revised resolution. So this is warned for action. I'll leave it up to the board. Any additional questions or comments on the revised resolution?
Simply, and what is the, what is the request? That we also adopt this as written?
The request is that we would join in, take, take a motion to support the resolution and sign off on that, and it would be enhanced with not only the council's majority vote on this to present it, but would also serve with any other communities. Winuski did approve a resolution that is different than this, but I think along similar lines of supporting kind of some joint governance.
The rationale for why it was presented to the school board was offered at the last meeting. I could revisit that.
Yeah, and I remember, I just didn't know specifically what the, you know, are we going to offer our own resolution in support of this? Or would we become a signatory to this, or...
I think what we propose is that we probably develop a signatory page that supports the city council's resolution.
Okay.
And, and it's really to support our partner municipal body for South Burlington taxpayers and residents. Wendell?
No, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you had a question.
Thanks.
All right, any questions from the public, comments? All right, do I have a motion to, as the school board, to approve the joint resolution for regional governments to be presented to the Burlington International Airport?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and the motion passes. Thanks, Tom, for all the hard work on this, and to the council as well for really good discussion. So we will figure out a document that can be signed and get that over to the city council, to Kevin and Helen. Great, thank you. All right, we'll move on to agenda item seven, superintendent, oh, actually, on city-school collaboration. On, I don't want to go without saying this. On Monday, the city council also took action on a letter of intent that would look at a land swap on the central school property, in part for a community center for the city, and, and then potential area for additional access to the school, to the property if needed, as well as a memorandum of understanding on the city hall property in the event that the voters approve a bond for development of the community center, which includes the rec, erect space, library, and administrative offices, that the school could potentially access 575 Dorset Street for consolidation of our central office and business operations, if, in fact, our due diligence proves that it's a viable option. So the council approved that action, and the, this has not been warned for school board action at this point in time, but we expect that we will take it up at a future agenda. So I just wanted to make people aware of that at this time. Any questions or comments? Okay. All right, we'll move on to the superintendent's report, and I'll turn to you, Joanne.
Okay, and you, all of you have copies of the enrollment update. That's the first thing that David wanted you to see. So Patrick provided us with, just recently, numbers for the high school. With the total, so grade nine is 231, 10, 261, 205 for 11, and 243 for grade 12, with a total of 940. Again, the new, numbers are fluid. We still having enrollments now. I've heard it from all of you guys in the last week. Kids are still, families are still enrolling students. So that's the first piece you have. Also, the tuition students, you requested that at the last meeting. So you have the total tuition students that have, that we know of right now in the high school tuition students. And then there's a chart that shows all the elementary enrollments.
So have there been any changes since the last time we saw this?
Yes. There's increasing in, I think, in all the buildings. Holly, who's sitting here today, there's her, all those buildings have had increases in enrollment. She's got a problem, a little bit of a trouble area in kindergarten where we're up to 20, which we're not supposed to exceed, exceed 20.
We don't, we don't have the color-coded version, so this is a little harder to read.
And the first grade, it looks like, at Chamberlain is also at 20.5.
Yeah.
We lost one, so we're at 20. Okay.
Changes moment to moment.
Right.
So maybe we can just highlight, so Chamberlain, kindergarten, first grade are two areas?
Yep, that we're watching. And then at Orchard School, the fourth grade is up at 25. So that's another area that we're looking at.
And that's a not to exceed 25?
Right.
Okay.
So questions for me around that? I don't know if I can answer them, but...
You can ask them.
Maybe to Patrick, can you just, I, we're kind of looking at the high school numbers in a vacuum here, along with the tuition students. Can you speak to those two areas? Up, down, as expected and planned for?
Can I see what you're looking at?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Got it.
Do you have them both?
He just has one.
He just has a situation.
You want to look at this one?
John, John Obbin told me that we usually err on the side of...
Being conservative, yes.
Underestimating tuition students, and so, you know, we're, we're receiving more students than we thought we were going to, but that's kind of typical in that we usually are pretty conservative on the revenue side, just to make, because there's revenue attached to that. And then in terms of the other numbers, we, you know, we expect it to be around 940. I was looking at our, our class sizes today, and, you know, there's hot spots and cool spots, but we're fine. I, I don't think we're going to be in a spot where the, having more students, either by way of tuition or students that are continuing to enroll, is going to result in us having any staffing issues necessarily.
Any other questions or comments from the board on the data we have here?
Not specific to classroom teacher, regular ed, you know, I don't, you know, we should always have students that come in that, that may create staffing issues relative to IEPs, et cetera, but in terms of just, um...
Yeah, so it looks like, I meant...
Regular ed classrooms.
The way I'm looking at it is we're kind of on target with the high school enrollment, and tuition students are up, but we also predicted or forecasted that revenue fairly conservatively, so we're well within that.
Right.
That forecast. Okay. And percentage of tuition students in the high school as a percentage of total? It looks like it's, is that close to 20%?
Yeah, it's not quite 20%, but it's pretty close, yeah. And our, our yield in terms of the non-resident tuition students is, is steadily increased over the years because the graduating classes from those schools are getting, in some cases, significantly smaller. And, and we're maintaining or increasing the number of students that we're enrolling from those schools. So, you know, that, that's obviously good news for us on the revenue side, and in terms of just recruitment and retention, which we do spend a little bit of time and energy on.
And I'd highlight again, I know the superintendent has not utilized the contingency teacher that was approved in the budget. So I assume, Joanne, I'll look to you and the principals who are with us today, that that's kind of where we're watching the hot spots in the elementary school in particular. All right, any other comments from the board? Public? All right, we're just moving right along here.
We are. Pat, we're going to meet your goal.
You'll have to tell David you run a really quick meeting.
Well, I think you run the meeting, right? The next thing from the superintendent's report is the new hire FTE report update. Now, I don't know what you saw last time, so... These are all our new hires. We still have a few openings to fill, I believe. I know, I know, I have a few openings still to fill.
Okay, I know one of the things we're looking for is just a reconciliation on the FTEs that were budgeted versus actual. So I know there's a, well, there's not, is there a total here? Yeah, so there's not like a summary of this in terms of...
No.
Budgeted versus actual.
Elizabeth, if you look for variance, you can tell. The total is going to be 22 less. Is that correct, Joanne? If you only show variances where there is one on the first page?
Position budgeted and only needed a point two, so that's where he's, he's noted those.
But it, does it, okay, it shows, and the next page is budget initiatives, but it doesn't show, it doesn't show budgeted positions that haven't been filled, correct?
I think those are the ones that are, the initiative positions that aren't filled there.
They're just blank.
They're just blank.
The preschool coordinator, the general ed parent educator, HR support, and autism support.
Oh, I see, gotcha.
Looks like those are missing.
Those are not filled, yeah.
Well, those are budget initiatives, not just, not necessarily the complete budget. Those were the new ones, right?
Right.
So do we have anything that is a, uh, an open position that hasn't been filled in the regular staff that fell outside the budget, the initiatives? New initiatives?
I don't know. I'd have to check with David on that one. Do you want me to get that information for you?
Uh, well, I think, I think a summary reconciliation is what the board's looking for eventually. And I know the late approval of the budget, and because the RIF notices had to be sent out when they did, I know we ran into some challenges associated with the timing of interviewing and hiring new staff. And this is, for the benefit of the rest of the board and the public, this was one of the kind of unintended consequences of the budget being approved so late and taking the three tries to get it approved, was, one, some of the staff that we had to RIF went on to take other positions, some staff that were waiting for positions. If a position might have been eliminated that had seniority call rights, there was a sort of a trickle-down process that had to occur. And then being later in the year after teachers or support staff might have already looked to sign a contract to ensure employability with another district or supervisory union, we were looking at a, a different pool of candidates, potentially, so may have interviewed more candidates. And then we were also running into the interview teams that would normally do the interviewing process were no longer at school after, you know, mid-June, later June timeframe. So I think we were having some interview, I won't call them challenges, but just had to do things differently to accommodate the later timeframe. So those all were different staffing challenges associated with the late budget approval, just for future reference.
So then you want a summary reconciliation of FTEs budgeted versus the actual, right? That's what you guys were.
And the dollars, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Would that satisfy the board's needs? Any other comments on the staffing changes from the public? All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll move on to, we have two policy reviews for action. We have a third reading of the travel reimbursement policy, or, is it a policy? And the capitalization of assets policy. So given that's the third time we've read them, and I think the changes have been made that needed to occur, do I have a motion to approve the travel reimbursement policy?
Move that we approve the travel reimbursement policy, D8.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And the policy passes. And capitalization of assets.
I move that we pass the capitalization of assets policy, policy E3.
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes.
Those third readings are easy.
Yeah. All right, Act 85, Healthcare and General Ed Fund. We're referring to this differently. This is a payment reduction, a clawback, and a recapture now. So I do have copies for the board of the information that went to the business office just, was it yesterday?
Yesterday.
Just yesterday. Maybe a couple extra copies there. I'll hold on to those. So the district did receive, I'm sorry that John Obbin isn't here to recap this, but the district did receive its targeted reduction in reimbursement from the general ed fund. And as you recall, this was in an effort to, when the budget was approved at the state level, it was an effort to target the new healthcare plans that are being introduced and the potential savings that those might generate in the form of a reduction to, from the general ed fund to various districts and SUs. So we, we were to receive a target amount, which we have now received, and the goal in that was 65% of the amount in fiscal year 2018 and 35% of the district's targeted amount in 2019. So the targets that South Burlington have received are, I got to go to the page I can read. The first year, we have targeted savings of 304, or clawback of $304,731. And year two is $164,086. And if you recall, we had budgeted, in this year's budget, $50,000 of healthcare savings. So our target over two years, one in the form of a general ed fund, healthcare recapture, and the other in the $50,000 in terms of the budget that was approved this year is about $525,000 over a two-year period. So the board is just seeing these numbers. We haven't had the opportunity to hear the feedback from our business manager, who just received these, but this is available publicly. All school districts and supervisory unions are listed on a spreadsheet with their various charge recaptures. And the goal, I recall, in year one was to have a recapture of about $13 million, if I recall correctly. So that is our component of that, and that's where we stand. Any questions from the board that we want to make sure go back to David and John at this point? We obviously need further discussion on this and analysis. I know this is kind of the first time the boards had a chance to really dig into it.
So just for my elucidation, we're at the top of the second page. Yes, second landscape.
Well, they, the spreadsheets are characterized a little bit differently. They, uh, this, they're sorted as a percent of FY18 ed spending. They're sorted by total recapture dollar, and they're sorted by recapture as a percent of FY18 ed spending. So where we fall is dependent on the sort methodology.
Oh, I see, so it's...
So if you look at the sorted by total recapture dollar, we're on the first page.
Yeah.
But yes, if you're sorted by SU number, then district, then we're on the second page.
Yeah, the sort by total recapture dollar, we are in number six on the list. And just for purposes of comparison, the districts ahead of us on that list would be the Essex Westford, Champlain Valley, Rutland City and Burlington, and then Addison Central.
Okay, so, wait, do I have two of these?
Two, three.
There's three sorts on the spreadsheet, yeah.
Got it, so the second sort...
The second sort.
First page.
Yes. So specific questions we want, and I'm sure John Obbin is going to put together a more thorough analysis for us, but any specific questions we want to pass on through Joanne? I do think we need to understand the formula that was used. And I think there's a question whether or not, there were six months of 12 months of the new plan in here for FY18. So those would be, I know, two clarification points.
Where's that, that, sorry to interrupt, where is that spreadsheet available that you just, that you referenced that has all the districts on it? Is that, is that just hard copy, or is that, is it on the web?
It's on, it came from Brad James at AOE. So, well, we do have a hard copy, but if you want the link, we can get that to you, too.
Okay, I'll, I'll get it from David, I'll just, thanks.
Diane?
Just for clarification, so that 65% has to be claimed or recovered or clawed back or whatever for the current fiscal year, FY18? So the budget that we're currently operating in, I just want to clarify that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's, I guess that's my question, is how the mechanism works, though. So exactly what are we then expecting?
Well, I can't answer any of these questions.
Yeah.
That's why we need John to evaluate it. But that was my fundamental question of, the higher number was in a year where budgets are already approved, and there's only six months of available new healthcare plans. So it doesn't seem like it's prorated. If anything, I would have thought it would be 35% year one and 65% year two. But I didn't write the law, so... I think those are good questions. Wendell?
Neither did I, but knowing something about the way the process worked, I expect the governor wanted a lot more, and he wanted it now. The legislature didn't want any of this now, and there is no mechanism available to reconcile a difference. It's not like the school board, which can at least go to last year's budget. So it's a matter of not falling over the cliff and having no budget. This is the most compromise that they can come up with. Does it make sense?
Well, we have, we have a number now, so...
Speculate, I mean, the ed payments in the second half of the fiscal year coming April, don't they?
Sorry, the...
The education fund payments, so from the state to school districts, so they're just going to withhold this amount.
I'm not sure the timing on those. That's a, that'll, it's a question we can clarify with John, but that's my understanding, is it will just be withheld.
April 30th, we're going to get $304,000 less money from the state.
That's what it looks like, but I, again, I don't want to speculate too much till we hear from our real experts.
Well, and the question is also then what that implies for next year's budgeting, and how the state actually expects to get back the 35%, since we approve an overall budget, as opposed to, you know, a line... as opposed to, you know, a line item, by line item budget.
Are you capturing?
Yeah, I'm trying to.
Great.
Meg's probably getting them, too.
Good. And other board questions? Other questions from the public? We obviously have a lot to understand here, but we were expecting these numbers yesterday, and we did get them. And now we just have to digest them and kind of figure out, obviously, we will, South Burlington will not be alone in this challenge of figuring out how we received our target, what it means to our current operating budget, what it means to future budgets, and then what the expectations are in terms of delivering a public education with that many less dollars that haven't been budgeted at this point, particularly when they're targeted out of healthcare and the healthcare, the new healthcare plans are not introduced till January 2018. So we have a lot of work to do.
Can I make an observation and let me know if this doesn't sound accurate or anything? I mean, having to pay back $300,000 is almost like us having to go through a third budget defeat because we would have to remove a certain amount extra each time the budget's defeated. So is, is that an inaccurate thing to say that it's, you know, almost like that? Even though our, after our first couple of budget defeats, we reduced more than that. But here, here we are, again, having to reduce another certain amount of money from our budget, or at least the amount that we can spend.
Yeah, I don't know, really know the question to that, Alex, because I don't know the way the formula was written.
Yeah.
And I also don't know how the proposed co-share terms that were developed translate into the savings that the state's trying to recapture here, so.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll look to John to kind of give us more guidance on this
Yeah.
at our next meeting. Any other comments? All right. All right, we'll move on to update on negotiations. Bridgette, do you want to give an update?
There really isn't an update on support staff at the moment. We're still sort of waiting for some folks to get back from vacation to schedule another session with support staff. So with the SBE, the teachers' union, we are scheduled to have mediation on Monday, the 21st, to see if we can come to an agreement, so that's...
And we're, we're scheduled to be here at 10:00 AM, starting at 10:00 AM on the 21st. And we're working with a federal arbitrator, I believe.
Yes.
All right, and our goal is to secure a settlement prior to the start of school year. Any other comments, questions? All right, we'll move on to agenda, item 11, review topics for other paper articles. I don't know if we got a copy of this in here. Did we get that, Meg, in here?
I don't, I don't think I saw it when I went through the packet earlier.
Let me see if it's in the blue folder. I do not see it. Well, I know one of the areas we talked about was, I think, our student rep, Alex, is going to be working on an article or something around, that may end up being posted in a different venue, around the roles and responsibilities and selection process for the student rep to the school board. And Patrick, I know the board is interested in getting that out to students fairly soon after they're back at school so that we could potentially have another student rep on the board prior to getting into budget conversations. So I don't know when you normally send that out, but hopefully we're looking at candidates sometime in maybe the late September, early October timeframe.
Yeah, because of the way we, we used to have to kind of wait for student council to form, but because of the way we do it now, it's, it's, it's more open to any student, whether they're on student council.
Is that timeframe reasonable?
Yeah, totally, absolutely. Yeah, I could start pushing it out this week.
Well, I think, I think Alex is going to put something together, and, and I, I believe we have an application form, too. So she'll, she could put a link on that and get it out to the
She knows where to find me.
juniors, yeah.
And I'll track her down, I see her all the time.
Good. And then I know we were targeting some information on this healthcare recapture information. So why don't, why don't I take the, or I'll ask Meg if you would send out the last draft of other paper articles, because I'm trying to think when our next one is due.
We do one a month?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is due September 28th, it's the one I'm doing on budget and community input. And it will be published October 5th.
Okay, that seems late, that means we wouldn't have one in September. I think we've got one date in between. So if we can maybe send that out to the board, and we'll just, we have topics filled in, I think, for three of the areas. So we'll just make sure we reinforce who, who's got that responsibility. Are there any other topics we want to put kind of in the parking lot for other paper articles?
It's kind of hard without having the list that we have brainstormed in front of us. Yeah, I find it challenging that we, we keep doing this, we keep having a brainstorm and writing them down, and then having them in front of us when we need to look at them. So I think we should just park it for now.
Yeah, and Meg, if you could make a note, just, we're going to have to put that in the regular board packet.
Yeah.
Be helpful. All right, we'll move on to item 12, setting the agenda for the September 6th meeting. That is in front of you. I probably would propose that we put in, under the city school collaboration, maybe a specific action item on an LOI. That would be a letter of intent. I'm sorry.
I have a lot of that.
That's just payback for all the jargon, all the acronyms you've used, Joanne.
I get it.
So we'll, we'll warn that for action, just so we have a placeholder there. Any other items that board members see we need to add? Obviously, David may have some when he's back from holiday. All right.
I was, I just don't have a date in mind. Our next board meeting after that is really on the 13th of September. They're just only a week apart. Was there a reason that we had them a week apart?
Uh, yes, there was a holiday in September, I believe, around the 20th, that we had to either move one up or back, and I think it got moved up.
Okay.
Although I can't think of what holiday was in.
Rosh Hashanah, probably.
There you go. And it's Bennington Battle Day, by the way. We don't know why. All right, we'll move on to future agenda items. Any deletions or additions to future agenda items?
I would suggest not so much EQS 2125, because that's not so part of 2.0, but we just did and accepted 2.10. And so it doesn't seem that you need to have the curriculum content to continue to be on the agenda, because as we just covered, I accept it for a year. And will come up every year as part of 2.10.
Is there anything unique about the EQS, Stuart?
It's, it's referenced in the policy.
Okay. All right, if the board's in agreement, we'll take that one off the list.
Just trying to help.
Thank you. All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll move on to considering the minutes of the meetings of July 31st, August 2nd, August 3rd, and August 7th. The first one is July 31st, any changes? This was a working session relative to negotiations.
No changes from my perspective.
Seeing none, those are approved. Regular meeting on August 2nd. Seeing no observations, those will, by consensus, be approved. A working session, actually, was, yeah, work special meeting on August 3rd. Seeing no changes, those are approved. And a special meeting on August 7th. This was another working session with a subcommittee.
Yep.
All right, and seeing no changes, those are approved. All right, we have a consent agenda. Do you want to run through any of these, or just want us to read through?
Yeah, you can read through them. I, again, these are mostly David's. These are hires that he's...
Would, would you mind just going through the list of who they are?
Yeah, the consent. So, oh, so Dennis Akey is a 1.0 math teacher at South Burlington High School. Scott Carlson, a 1.0 grade six science teacher at FHTMS. Maria Gordon, a .2 FTE mathematics teacher at South Burlington High School. Rochelle McGurn, a 1.0 FTE English language learner teacher at Chamberlain Schools, Chamberlain School, excuse me. Jennifer Tom, oh, boy, Milowitsz, right?
That's good.
.6 FTE guidance counselor at Orchard School. So those are our new hires.
Okay, and this is not an item we take action on, but any questions or comments? Great, everybody's on board for training?
Next week.
Good. All right, any, moving on to agenda, item 16, AP order four, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Any other business to come before the board? All right, I will take a motion, oh, sorry, Diane?
Is that an action item? Don't you, isn't it typically?
I believe we took that off as an action item a while ago.
Okay.
So it's, it is not an action item, anyone? All right, and just one, Meg, if you can make a note that the August 21st meeting should be warned for a 9:00 AM start? All right, seeing no other comments or questions, I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
That's a miracle.
That's a record.